My name is Tyrone Washington. I'm running for Smithfield City Council, place one. I would like to first thank everyone for coming today and allow me to share with you a little bit about myself. I was born here, down the road from here. I have lived here my whole life, which means I've been in part of Smithfield for 51 years. I went all the way through Smithfield Independent School System, graduated from Smithfield High School in 1990. I'm married and I have a total of six children ranging at the age of 27 and down to the last two 18-years-old will be graduating in May. Here's some more information about me. I worked for the city of Smithfield for seven years. I ran the water department, I was in the water department. I ran streets and alleys. I helped in the electrical department, hanging Christmas lights and other stuff. Then I also joined the Smithfield Volunteer Water Department. I've been there for 20 years. I first started out as a lieutenant. Then I came to be a captain. Now I'm Assistant Chief for the Smithfield Department. I fought the Barris Park Complex Bar, Hidden Primes Bar, The Linky's Bar, and we do, and also help out with EMS, lift assist, all time of the night. We don't have no time schedule ever. So, that's all I do for the water department. Also, I work for Barris Park County Precinct too. I started as a roadhead. Now, I came up to be Assistant Waterman. And I've been there 23 years, March the 15th of 2000. So, starting out as a roadhead, I was an operator. I ran maintainer's, backhoes, anything you want to know. So after that, I was involved in youth football. I loved my kids and I took care of my kids. I was a president for 10 years. And I stayed, even after my children were done with youth football, I stayed with the kids. Because there were some kids in there that, you know, stuff get expensive these days. And some kids that was in there that couldn't afford to play. I was there to help those kids. And no matter who you was, I was there to help you. So after that, I do a little lawn service for myself. I take care of everybody's jobs. I mow on both sides of the tracks. And also on my part-time thing, I work for Villa Ponca Wrecking Service. I drive heavy wreckers and the small tow trucks and everything else. To make a long story short, I'm elected here for the entire Smithfield community. I want to see the town represented completely. And if I'm elected, that's what I would do. Thank you.
All right, next up Mitchell.
I'm Mitchell Jameson. Thanks for having me. Tyrone and I are running against you. We laughed the other day, I think we were out competing, putting up signs. We want to make sure we remember who we were. What, can you put it on here?
Stand up.
Why don't you guys stand up and talk to us? We can't see us if we're not there. I'll never get back in that chair. Where was I? Tyrone, I was trying to catch up on how we knew each other. It was back years ago, he lived next door to my brother and sister-in-law in Colorado Shore. And so I got to know him and know his dedication to the community. Tyrone would give you the shirt off his back. And if you need something, you hear any emergency, he's the man to go to. So, he's a formidable opponent and was committed to name recognition. And so, I can tell you that whichever one of us is elected, we're going to do the best for Smithfield. There are two things that are in common with everybody up here on this stage. And one of the things that I learned the other night in a seminar on how to run a local political campaign. And the one thing that they asked us, and I can promise you this is true, none of us are normal. If we're not normal, then we wouldn't be up here. The second thing that we all have in common, everybody here, is that we're committed to doing the best for Smithfield. No matter who wins this election, Smithfield's going to be in good hands. And I've seen, we've got a current councilperson here, council member, and Joanna's here, and Tyrone and I are actually running to replace her. They've done a great job, and thank you for your service and dedication, Joanna. She's left the council, leaving the council in a place that the rest of us can come in and pick up and hopefully keep running the ball that they've got in play right now. The, in terms of my background, been coming to Smithfield for 35 years, my wife's family's been here forever. We moved here permanently 10 years ago. Now I think all of my sister, my wife's sisters are here. Our daughter has moved here, her family, we've got two granddaughters. And some of you may have seen a video we put together a few days ago. We put in the video of actually multiple generations and genes. My campaign manager's grandkids were here. And my two grand, well, one grand in Ottawaville when she was in school. But she's in the Tiger Trans by the way. The, that's why I'm here, is to run, to help try and develop and protect the future of Smithfield for them. It's for our kids and grandkids. Because it's going to take a lot of effort here as we move forward to try and handle this growth that is coming. Not only that it's coming, it is already here. And that is the theme of my campaign, which is managing growth before growth manages us. I'm not going to go into the bullet points. I had a rather lengthy PowerPoint presentation the other day that was ridiculous. Unfortunately, that's the type of planning, the depth that I'll go to. But my plan for managing growth before growth manages us is actually a three-point plan. And the elements in it, and I'll bring up, I had it at the last, but it really belongs at the top. And it's supporting the quality of life. And that means supporting the quality of life for the people that live here. And let's take care of the hometown folks first. Now if you've moved here recently, that means you too. What you want to see the future of the city look like, you're a part of it. And we want to take care of the people that are here now. Understand what your needs are, whether it's infrastructure, streets, drainage, sidewalks, sewage treatment, whatever it is, you've got to let us know. Because if we don't know what you want, we're going to end up here just doing what it tells us and voting our conscience. We've got to hear what the priorities are of the people who are here. Let us go to work on it. Evaluate the budgets, see if money needs to be moved, to focus on the priorities that you and the people tell us. And if we can't achieve what you want, we're going to tell you what it takes to go get it. And we'll find solutions. We just have to know exactly what it is that the people want moving forward. I've also got a list of priorities and focus and process that I've put together. It's a five-point thing, I'm hitting the 30-second notice here. So one of the things that I talked about was reaching out to the community and expanding inclusion and helping the neighbors, that neighborhoods want to be represented, whether it's Charleston Boulevard or Hurley Estates, or the north side, or the east side, whatever it is. We need to reach out, we want to make the council available to you. We'll give you time. I see the city council all the time and they need me out.
You all agree? It's fine. All right, let's do it.
What was I saying? We need to give you access at the council, whether we ask to set aside 15 minutes, 20 minutes, every meeting, whatever. We need to hear what you need. Thank you.
All right, Tom.
Hello, my name is Tom Etheridge. My wife and I have been now living in a house behind the post office at Fort Inca. I am currently one of your elected council members and I'm proud to be that. I want to thank Lori, John, and also commend the candidates here. Anybody that's willing to throw their hat in and do the work is deserving of our respect. I believe I'm most passionate about governance more than anything else. And there's obviously dozens and dozens of issues to come with Portland city, everything, land use issues, to water, wastewater, buildings. But I'm interested in transparency with governance and getting the community engaged in the city. It's one of the things I strive hard to do. And I appreciate the support and work with my colleagues, councilman Morgan, the others. Just to get more items on the agenda, add more things in public meetings so people know what's going on and have a chance to come to talk and debate them. I tell people humbly my advice, anyone running is a member of three things. Remember who you work for. I work for you, and I work for all of you. And references, south side, east side, the west side, the north side, we all run and work. We all serve and work. So we represent all of Smithfield, also understand what your job is. So know the job, to be prepared, figure homework. It's not a 45-minute, once a month, or an hour, once a month job. A lot more than that. It's not just doing research, it's going to Old World, it's going to homework, it's going to MLK bars, driving around and talking to people and listening to what their concerns are. So number one, know who you work for, know the job. Number two, be prepared, and most importantly, show up. Go to meetings, go to workshops, go anything that gives you an opportunity to listen to what other people are thinking. You would be amazed at how much I learned from being three mornings a week at Old World Bakery and on Sundays at Comfort Cafe and Carnalente and Honey's. Learned a lot. So, I'm running unopposed. So, I'm interested to talk with me, I guess, for another two years. But I am here interested in any questions you have. I'll be very open and transparent about any questions that you ask. And I appreciate y'all's attention.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jim Jenkins. I'm running for city council, place three. I've been in and around Smithfield since the early eighties. My life is from here. I know that's funny. We all have some sort of relationship with this town or the people. And that's why everybody that's up here cares about this town. We know that the growth is coming and the people that live here want their small-town feel. But they know that we need more of a tax base, they know that we need other things that are going to make our city really, really a place for everyone to enjoy. We need, you know, we need some infrastructure done. I'm glad to see that we have moving forward with the wastewater, getting it on the ballot to have all these things done. But there are other things that need to be addressed too, as our growth goes. And that's what the city council will do. If I'm a member of it, we'll look for these things. We'll look at what's going on. We'll try our best to make sure that everyone in the city is involved. Have workshops, come out to see people. I've been going to everybody, I've been walking, it's what I do since I retired from American Airlines. I walk up and down the streets. My wife says you should not say you're a street walker, but that's what I do. I'm walking down the streets, visiting with everyone. I think it's important that we get the input that we can get. We need to know what our county people want and say. And trust me, it's different with every person. As Tom said, on the Old World Bakery, I go down to the doughnut shop a lot because that's where the older group of gentlemen said, "That is a rough crowd, folks." They are a rough group to talk to. So, I really enjoyed this. I hope I can have your vote and I can get elected and we can move forward with doing the things that will make this town good. I've got to tell you, I love it already. I'm a licensed plumber, I'm licensed air conditioning mechanic, have associates in electronics. I've worked 30 years in the forework area, building, was a builder at one time. I also was involved in planning and zoning. It's just, all these things come together in my experience to see that now we really have a chance, if we change our zoning laws, get them up to date, to make it so that everything in this town goes smoothly. We have a way and a path forward. And we already have that because Joanna and all the city councilmen that are putting that down, they are really working to make the path good. That's really all I have to say. I want you all to know that no matter who you vote for, please vote. That's the most important thing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica. Monica Fuss. And first, I want to thank Tyrone and Mitch and Tom and Jimmy because... Can you read that? Stop it. Because, like Mitch said, you know, I think we're probably not all normal and not real brave, crazy, or some of those. But I appreciate everyone stepping up and there's really not a bad choice among us. So I'm not from here. I have lived all over the place, but I am so grateful to be here. Within six months of moving to Smithfield, I felt like I had more of a community than I have ever lived in any place my entire life. I feel a real sense of belonging here that I've never felt before. And what's really sad to me is a lot of people who do belong here, working or living, can no longer afford to live here comfortably. And I am a person of action and I would like us all to come together to do something about that. So, being grateful to be here, I've been taught that when you're grateful for something, you take care of it. So I've been trying to do things to get back to this town for the last few years. I have built dog houses for dogs that are chained up in their yards in the winter. I do great purines rescue, which is why I'm always covering a dog here. I serve on planning and zoning and the historic preservation committee for the cities. I've taught crochet lessons to dozens of people in the town and to teach more if there's any baker who wants to learn. And started the Smithfield Yarn Bombers in part to bring people together across the city over our commonalities and not be divided by our differences. The last yarn bomb project we did, that we hung up at the Chamber of Commerce, was actually a tribute to Smithfield's airing of the quilts tradition. It was almost 400 crocheted squares sewn together to resemble loosely a large quilt. Because the traditions the town has are beautiful and we want to honor that. I've read all of our comprehensive plans dating back to 1997 to try to learn some things from our past leaders. The 1997 Smithfield Comprehensive Plan recommended that we put together a volunteer group to help fix up the dilapidated houses that are falling down around us, particularly for people who are elderly or disabled and no longer able to help themselves. So I've started, I recently started a nonprofit called Friends of Smithfield. And we're looking for volunteers and donations to come together and fix up some of those houses. One person can really only do so much. But when we come together, whether it's to repair a home for someone who can barely walk, whether it's to crochet a 400-square-foot sort of quilt, when we come together, we do a whole lot more. And that's why I'm running, to try to serve the town in a bigger way and pull us all together to work for Smithfield as a whole. Now, I know we've been talking about preparing for growth, and yes, growth is coming. But we have to look backwards too. And like I said, I've read all the comprehensive plans, go back to 97, to learn the things that we have done and the things we have yet to do. And the city has made huge strides in some of our issues. And nothing but good things to say about the people who work for the city and its leadership. We've made, we've had tremendous accomplishments. But we still have a lot more to do with regard to the increasing crime rate, continued drainage problems. But I see the most critical of the issues as affordable housing. So I'm not a developer anymore and I don't want to be. But in a former life, I ran all of the Texas Development Operations for a national nonprofit, building homes for low-income communities. Affordable merely means you don't spend more than 30% of your income on housing. And low income in Barris Park County means a family of four earning $88,000 or less. Smithfield's median income is $58,000. So well over half of our community falls into that low-income category. It's the people who bring you a drink, you're a fat cat. It's the kids who graduate from high school and don't have a place to live that they can afford. The teachers who have to commute here because there's no place to live. We need a zoning overhaul that allows us to create homes in people's backyards for students graduating, smaller houses on smaller lots that cost less to build so first-time employers can get a foothold in the market. I can't do this by myself, but I'm hoping you all come to council meetings and step up and make your voice heard too. Because together, we really can make this city.
That was perfect, and the timing, right? I saw my son reaching for it. That takes skill. And it does, I know it does feel unfortunate when your mic is cut off.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask Chase, when it's 30 seconds, keep it up the whole time. And just, you know, hey, hey, 30 seconds. So now it's time for us to ask them questions. And if you want to, the microphone is here. I put my cellphone up here and you can text me a question, but you have to attach your name to it. We had a question about anonymous questions and a few of the candidates didn't like the idea. So if you want to, if you don't want to get up and talk on the microphone. If you can't read that, I can, I see people explaining to see. Do you want me to say my cellphone or that? Okay.
I'm old.
Okay. 870... It's an Arkansas number, shows where I was, I was a reader. And I will read those in between people coming up here and asking questions. So the way it will work for this is give you one minute to ask your question, which is plenty of time. So that's one minute to ask your question. And then if it's a question for everybody, for all of them, then we'll do one minute each to answer the questions because it adds up. And if it's a question for one candidate, if you, you know, if you step up and you go, "Hey Monica, I want to know this about you. Did you crochet that sweater you're wearing today?" Well, because it was posed to one candidate, you get three minutes to answer that specifically. So if you wanted to, you can ask a specific candidate or you can ask all of them. And then if you do have a follow-up question, just stay at the mic and I'll give you 45 seconds for that. Sound good? Everyone like it? So I guess I'll start it off, just to break the ice. And then if you have a question, you can either text me or just step up to the mic and wait until the last question is answered. First question, what do you feel like is the greatest challenge? The greatest challenge facing Smithfield right now? And what would that solution be? And the challenge for you is to answer that in one minute. Good luck. So it's one minute each. And the timer starts now.
When you speak.
That's really loaded. And the answer is going to seem like this is a fallback answer, but in a lot of ways, it's the best answer I can give you. The Comprehensive Plan that Monica was speaking about hasn't been updated in a long time. We've got to get that done so we have a foundation that guides us through to the future, including reviewing all the subdivision ordinances, the housing plans, where we might want housing to be located. Part of Monica's passion and council member Janice Bruno's passion that carries affordable housing. We have to have a master plan, we've got to know where our multifamily housing goes. It's a necessity. But nobody, everybody wants everything until it comes next door. Until we have the ordinances and the plan in place, we're not going to accomplish that.
Like Mitch said, if you think it's loaded, there's a lot of really, really important to say. The most important, I really think it's community engagement. Because in order for us to address a number of really important issues and do it in the right way, we have to be responsive to what the community wants. And so, whether that's how we handle growth, whether it's how we review our zoning, whether it's utilities, whether it's going to one-to-one garbage pickup, whether we eliminate brush and tree service. I mean, there's just a myriad of things that are all worthy of consideration. And all of those, in order for them to be successful, need buy-in and support from hundreds of the community. So I would probably say the most important thing is continuing to find ways to engage the community, which people like governance and getting items. Councilmember agendas is so important to me. I tell people often, as long as it's legal and you can get three votes, we can do anything we want in this city, in fact. That's all it takes. It's got to be legal and you got to get three votes. So, but the only way you can make a decision is to have something available to you. You have to get these issues that are important to you on the agenda and you have to please come out and tell us what you think.
Good job.
So I think one of the most important things coming before us now is we do need to update the Comprehensive Plan. But before that, we need to get our planning and zoning ordinances in line and updated. If we have those done, we can move forward with the Comprehensive Plan. The things that matter. Now, all of this has, as Tom said, we need community involvement. I mean, we need all the input from everyone we can get. We do need to have workshops. We do need to have town halls out in the community at different places, whether they're at church or whatever they are at. But if we can have the community involvement, we can be able to know what our citizens want and know what direction we need to take. I'm going to stop now so you can get that.
I'm thinking that getting your mic cut off is going to be a rite of passage. It's going to be a rite of passage. Have you done it yet?
You know, I agree with all the guys up here. But you know, my main thing around here is, you know, somebody like me, I just like to take care, you know, of the brush pickup and on both sides of the tracks and a lot of more things. My main concern that we need to come together is, you know, take care of the drainage and all the road repairs and everything. That's what I'm looking at on my list. So, right now, if we all, and it also takes, we all got to come together, you know? Everybody got to stick together and be together. That's the type of person I am. I'm not a one-sided person. I work with all sides. So everybody just got to come together. All right? Thank you.
All right, I'm not going to say housing, surprise. I said it was, you know, one of the most crucial issues facing us, but I don't think it's our largest challenge. There are a whole lot of things that can be done to give us some more affordable housing. And that's more about execution than a challenge. I think that the community engagement, yes, is important. We have the same 30 people show up to every workshop and to every city council meeting. And we need to hear from everyone else. And a lot of people don't come because they think it doesn't make a difference. And I can assure you, we're starting on planning and zoning. When people get up, get up and speak for or against something, it does make a difference. They show up. I think our biggest challenge is money. Because there are so many things that we need. More housing, better drainage. We need a succession plan for our city manager, who's awesome, but I wish we could afford to hire an assistant city manager now and start training them up, a full-time economic development person. So we need, we have the challenge of figuring out how to grow the pie, how to increase our income without raising all of your taxes. I would love to hear ideas on that.
Okay, do we have any questions? Anybody want to step forward? All right, come on up to the mic.
I'm going to allude to what Monica just said about showing up. They recently voted on something that I didn't show up for and it came back to bite me in the rear. And one of the issues I think is you guys are getting your agendas on Friday night and then you have to be prepared to vote Monday. And I hear that's a minimum requirement. Can we go for a week, maybe two weeks? I bet a whole neighborhood there to vote, to oppose what you voted to pass. So how do you feel about more time before you have to vote?
Yes, please. Just, just yes, please. The package that you guys get, if you go on the city council website and you pull up the agenda and the packet, that's just a fraction of what the, I've been told. I haven't seen it, but that is a fraction of what the city council members actually receive. And so there is a ton of information to throw. And if you want to talk to people in the community and find out what they want, there's just really not enough time to do all your due diligence. So having a week to do it would be a massive improvement.
We really do need more input from the citizens. And you're right, we need more time. But also... But also, the packages that come out, like you said, we only get a fraction of that. We think the city council gets more, so they may have more information. So if we had more time, we could go to the city councilman, you, me, anybody. If I get elected, we become the man. So that would be what would happen. But we need to be able to communicate with each other. And if that's what you want, you wanted to have, you know, tell you what you wanted, we need to have a plan that is the same every time. I know there are variances. That's why we need to update planning and zoning.
Hundred percent agree. John and I talked about this before, getting packages earlier in the week. There's a balance. There's a balance between, you know, getting a package where most of the work is done. So you get a package that doesn't end up with a ton of slip pages. I did say at the beginning when I introduced myself, I was a banker for about 16, 17 years. So I served on a variety of loan committees and, you know, the kind of typical you get your loan committee package on Tuesday by five, and loan committee meetings on Friday. And there was always this push and pull between the loan officers who had to present and the people who served, hadn't been considered deliberate. Getting enough information with enough time, ask questions is a real problem, in my opinion. When you get packages at 4:45 Friday afternoon, and you have to have a meeting at 5:00 on Monday. You don't have business days to do third-party due diligence. You don't have a lot of time to go out in the community and talk to people. It's something that's very easy for us to fix, and I hope that we would address that pretty soon. Maybe not a week to two weeks, but I'd love to see us get our packages by, you know, noon on Wednesday or 5:00 on Tuesday, so we have at least two or three business days. We want to call outside third-party sources to try to figure out what we should do. So I appreciate that comment.
And Chase, can you, let's make sure we hold the thing up really high on this house so that way, because they're focused on the people they should be focused on right now.
I'm on record advocating for this for quite a while, in a rather infamous city council meeting last year. Last year, I wrote a binder that was three inches thick, and I had gotten it the same time they did, I think, on a Friday at 4:30, and hadn't been prepared to speak that night at the same time that all these guys did. And I was asking for a delay of the meeting because I didn't think I could possibly make a decision that fast. And I failed in that endeavor. But this comes under the realm of transparency and accountability. And I've got a packet out there, a handout, since everybody wanted to see it. And the priority is focusing the process for our next city council. And I want to work to create an environment of transparency and accountability and seek early release of agendas for council meetings and public hearings.
I agree with everybody else. You got to do, at least give a little more time, because that's just like me, you know, working for the county, you know? You know, I can get a work order on Monday, but they want me to do this on Tuesday, you know? But she had this work order since Friday. But I see, you know, you give people much more time, it'll work out better, and it'll help everything go good for everybody else.
You have a follow-up to say?
I do. I mean, it kind of maybe has been answered, but just what each one of y'all has thought. What is your top three? What's near and dear to your heart that you want to see Smithville that you're gonna work diligently to improve?
Me, myself, I'm preparing myself to work real hard on, like I said before, repairing the streets, repairing the drainage. But my main point is, get these alleys straight. You know, working with the fire department, I'm gonna be like, I'm all about safety. Working with the fire department, them trucks don't only pull in the front of the street. We pull in the alley. You know, some trucks gotta pull in the alley. But now, how the alley is looking right now, we can't even get a truck down there. So that's my goal right there, to prepare for the cleaning the streets and the alley, and get the drainage free.
Jeannie, you asking the top three items for our personal wish list?
Right.
Kind of sort of...
Everybody has something that they really want to work on. One.
One?
For me, I have a formal question, and it'll come up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant Jeannie instead of Jimmy, or Jimmy.
But yeah, I asked for your top three, but just what's, what you, kind of what's near and dear to your heart. Everybody has a pet question. What's your pet question?
You're taking all my time.
Sorry. Start over.
I didn't say it. Okay, thank you.
I'm a process guy, and the only thing we have to have processes defined so that we know how to address all these issues. Part of the processes, you know, I have a list to be here, but one of the things that's coming out loud and pearing me as I speak to people is that we have neighborhoods groups that feel like they're not represented. We really do need to work on inclusion, and that would be whether we go out to the neighborhoods and hear what they've got, or we find time for them to come and present to council and say what they want. And I've told each of these groups, and I'll work to represent you. If you'll just send an email to the council, and I'm lucky enough to be there, we can work with the other council members to get your neighborhood on the agenda if you do what you want. Now, the only thing that I leave everybody with is don't come in front of the council. Let us say, oh, thank you for coming. Ask us for something, and hold us accountable to that. Give us a timeline.
I would say that it's consistent with my passion, which is improving governance. You know, really, quite honestly, what Jeannie brings up is really a process. It's part of overall governance. It goes to transparency, it goes to, you know, the ability for citizens to be engaged. If you make the timeline and the windows so short, there's somewhat of repression of engagement. So I would say my number one issue is improving governance, and that's everything from looking at, we have about five or six boards and commissions that we effectively delegate authority to. One of them's planning and zoning, one's airport authority, we have Smithville Housing, we have hospital authority, we have library, we have long day. I would love to see more transparency about what those are doing, get an update quarterly from them. The second thing would be the comprehensive plan, so we can get that going. That's extremely important. It's a 15, 18-month process that's done right. And then I would say last is economic development. Really, all of these things are interrelated. Number one would be governance. Number two would be the comprehensive plan, last and final.
I think the main thing that's coming towards us is the planning and zoning, because if we can get the ordinances updated and everything in line, then we can go with the comprehensive plan. Now, I have really wanted the drainage issues fixed, because they affect where I live. So yes, they have done a lot of work on that, the city has, and guess what? Now that my lawn does not flood, I am so happy about that. But I know other people have a problem with that still. It's a process for community. Top three things, planning and zoning, our comprehensive plan, as Tom said. And if I get elected, I'm gonna have to learn a whole new job. So I'm just, I'll be starting out as an apprentice, moving on, and hopefully my learning curve won't be as steep as it can be. Thank you.
Housing, that is my background and my passion, that everything deserves a clean, safe, affordable place to live. An expanded pool of resources. I've talked about our biggest challenge being revenue. And when I say expanded pool of resources, I don't just mean more revenue, it's not, I don't know, tax dollars, but bringing in more resources from the outside. Like Waco has a nonprofit that was designed to help its citizens clear cloudy title of vacant lots so that homes can be built there. So more resources. And then lastly, inclusion and governance for all. There is the perception that there is an unequal distribution of resources across our town. I don't know if that perception is real. I haven't asked our county department for, you know, how much money is being spent on streets here versus there versus the other neighborhood. But I think we need to really know where our resources are being spent, where our time is being spent.
It's funny, we got you. Everybody went right, yes. So if you, you have a question?
Yep.
Awesome. If you texted me a question, my, okay, good, I got it. So it's 870-416-2905. I have questions from two people, but I'm gonna go ahead and go to the one reason I have before I said that. If you'll step to the microphone so that the call will...
Right now, because the packet doesn't come out until Friday evening, are you all willing to make the commitment to review that packet, to understand the ramifications of everything that you have to talk about and vote on, to understand anything that you don't know, learn about it, figure out how to do it, and talk to the community within the weekend? Are you willing to put that time in? And that may be a full 72 hours of your time. It may be late night, early morning.
Yes.
Good question. Yes, people have done it before us, will continue to do it. We're not gonna be doing our jobs to the best of our ability if we don't set that time aside. And we're not gonna be doing the citizens justice if we don't set that time aside. So I think just standing up here and stepping up the run always had me that commitment.
The short answer is yes, that we have to make that commitment if we're running. This is a volunteer thing, and none of us can get paid. I know Tom, Gertie doesn't get paid. So we're not, this is not a paid job. We are committing to do a job for you. Yes, we need to take as much time as it takes to learn about what you put in for us, what is given to us, so we can go out and say, hey, we need some expert help, or we need some guidance in this, or we can just all go, we'll vote on this, and we're ready to go. But we do need to know everything that's happening.
Yeah, we don't get paid with money, but I feel like I get paid handsomely. I really do enjoy serving. I really do enjoy getting to meet and spend time with people that I serve. So I do feel like, while I don't get a check every month, I do get a reward, and I appreciate your support of me. Absolutely, of course, I'm committed to that. And it's, that's the process today, and you've got to do what you've got to do. There are some inherent challenges, because we get it at 4:45 on Friday. You know, on Saturday and Sunday, if you want to call PUC and find out rules and regulations about CCNs or something, they're not answering the phone on Saturday and Sunday. So if you've got a job on Monday morning, and you've got meetings, you might not be able to get around to it. And then let's say you get the answer on Monday, now you've got to go around and call city manager, call director of public work, you know? It's really, really hard. So there are occasions when it creates challenge. I'm absolutely committed to do it. It would be nicer, be more effective if we had at least two full business days. What we have to be impressive with.
I'm fortunate enough to be in a position where I own my own business, and I have a great staff. I'm certainly not retired, but I'm able to spend my time on the stuff that I need to focus on. I've been here for at least for about three years, all the Fridays. I'm always looking to see if the package is out or not. I was just talking to Tyrone, you know, the prep time, if you got any good kind of issue you want to speak about, the prep time's not so bad. But as a council member, we've got to, you've got to know everything in there, and we know what we're going up about to vote on. So yeah, I'm certainly emboldened and ready to do it.
Yeah, I agree with all the other candidates. As Jess and I'm willing to speak to anybody anytime. Other day, and if it's got to be at night, I've got plenty of time.
Okay, thank you so much. We've got one of those texts, and this is from Jeannie Bush. She said, and there's a follow-up after this. She said, "If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?" Financial, so this is about the city finances.
I've got the microphone, let's ask her. What was the question?
"If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?"
First thing that I'd like to get a better grasp of, despite the fact I've been to three new worth of budget workshops in one form or fashion, I don't really know enough about the details about where the money is being allocated, which departments might be, have a heavy focus versus ones that need to be, have more focus put into them, or are there new focus points that the citizens tell us that we're ready to focus on? The first thing that we need to do is find out what it is that needs to be done according to the priorities of the citizens. And then we need to evaluate how the budget's being allocated now. And if we've got gaps, then we need to decide how we can solve those priorities that need to be addressed. And if we can't fund those things, then we're gonna have to come to the citizens with a solution. And sometimes the citizens don't like that solution, but at least we'll be able to say we've evaluated it, and we know that the money's being spent appropriately, or it might be more.
I would say, you know, being maybe more familiar with the finances, I will tell you, I'm very confident that the city's finances are in a really, really good shape. I mean, there is a requirement to have a balanced budget. I don't, I don't know, I have any issues with where our ad positions are. We actually pour all money into really good rates. We're in really good position financially. Our audits have been very clean. I will say, one of the things that is worthy of some analysis is are we investing the money in the right places? And are we have the right metrics in place? KPIs, key performance indicators, to be able to communicate to citizens the value that they're getting from the different things the city does. Rec centers, libraries, police departments, they all need their own set of unique KPIs. They're not all financial driven. The city basically has two big pots. One makes money, and one spends money. General fund spends money, the utility company makes money. And we transfer money between the two, and that's how we fund the operation. So I would say, I know if you ask for three things, I guess what I would say is continue to stay focused on financial soundness in terms of making sure we don't incur debt at the wrong level. And also just do, develop KPIs that are appropriate, so we can communicate to the citizens that what they're getting for the money that they're giving us.
The thing I think we need to do is just keep doing it. The city does have a good financial footing. As Tom said, when they bring out the budget, it's very detailed. I am like Mitchell, I don't know what goes on behind those doors. We do, everybody wants transparency in that. They're not doing it to not be transparent. They're just doing it because they have to go through everything. I love to listen to the lady once a month, and she gets up, and she gets everything that's happening with the budget. So we know where the money's going. That's where we are, we're doing good, I can deal with that. We do need, maybe try to get more people coming to town so that our sales tax and stuff increases, so we can get more money to go to the chamber, so we can have more advertising and things like that. But that will happen as our city gets more involved and gets our more growth, as it's gonna happen in the world.
Do you need the question again, or do you want me to answer?
Okay. "If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?"
I'm gonna echo something that Tom said. So I've talked about my housing background, but I also actually started my career on Wall Street. Whether it's good or bad, I got my MBA, I'm ten years in corporate finance, building budgets, reading balance sheets, income statements. And I think the city is actually an excellent steward of the citizens' money. I think that we are in very firm financial footing and don't take on new debt really, really, as Tom mentioned, we take it on at pretty low rates. So I can't say that there are three steps to be on a firmer footing. I do think we need to expand the pie. And as that is not my area of expertise, I would seek outside ideas to increase revenues for us. I've looked at the budget workshops. I don't think there's frivolous money spent. I do think, as Tom mentioned though, we need to take a look at where the money in our different departments is going and who it's serving. If we're spending $400,000 on something, we want to know. We're serving a lot of people to the best of our ability.
Well, at this time, I'm not gonna take too much time, but right now, I don't know how the city finances are or anything, so I cannot speak on that. But I know it's going in a good place, so, but if I ever found out, I will let you know.
Awesome. Okay, so I actually have a follow-up from Jeannie Bush, and that is, this is a fun one. "If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way that you wanted, what would you do and why?" So again, if you received a $1 million grant for the city to use in any way you wanted, what would you do and why?
All grants have strings attached.
Anything you want.
Anything I want. I will focus on the priorities that the citizens give me.
I will focus on the priorities that the citizens give me. It is not my choice to spend the money that I, how I want to do it. I have an idea of where I think we should go in terms of, as, I, I think that Monica was talking about, expanding our, our tax base, now we're able to, I think we'd have need to have a plan, let's say that if we were to focus on downtown development, and let that be the driver for future growth, then I might be able, you know, maybe it's, or that's, I just think, Kenny. If we were to develop downtown, that's the focal point, or we could choose any other type of business or industry to expand the tax base, then we can find out what's successful, we can expand it to complementary businesses, we can get to industrial park building, where we got manufacturing. So more than anything, I think that would drive us more, bringing, uh, growth in here, so managed growth, so we can expand the tax base and take care of the priorities for the citizens.
Man, I want to say swimming pool. Do you know how many people have told me they want a swimming pool? Oh, it draws talent, right? So, and as much fun as that would be, when I look around, um, as much money as we spend, and as hard as our city workers do work, we still have pretty rough roads in some areas. We still haven't completed our sidewalks to school program. We're mostly done, I think, with this side of town. We haven't touched the south side yet. So I would really like to see us improve our road infrastructure and make more repairs, and finish our sidewalks to school program, and sidewalks across the tracks, so that our kids have safer routes and know where to go.
I know it's a little bit of a fantasy loaded question, but it does bring up something really important. I think I would spread it out, there's a lot of important things that, uh, the citizens would like to see happen. Uh, there are, when you, when you have an investment background, you're taught to look at risk reward, you're taught to look at where am I going to get the most bang for my buck. I would probably, there's a lot of low hanging fruit in this city. It may not be a swimming pool, but I have grandkids here, five and three. I enjoy our parks. We have an outsized number of really good quality parks in this town, for a town of our size. I would try to go around and look for opportunities where relatively small amount of dollars could have outsized returns. And I think there's a lot of opportunities from the, the rec center, uh, and the Mills on Wheels, a lot of really nice stuff that's happening there, things that we can leverage with, the workforce training center, which I think is one of our greatest assets, the airport, which I think is one of the most tremendous assets we have in town, that has a tremendous opportunity to improve and drive economic development. Uh, I would spread it around, and I would try to employ some sort of risk reward analysis or KPIs, but what are we going to get for all these different investments, so we can make the dollars go as far as.
One thing I do know, Janice Bruno's up here, she'd say the bridge, and that would be the whole comment that she would say for that million dollars. I, I believe we would work on our infrastructure, that would be our first priority, but also give some, uh, money to, a little more money to the chamber for advertisement and tourism to bring more people to town, because that right there is one way that leads to things that maybe our, our city gets more events happen, and people come here and they say, wow, I want, I want our event to be here. We have the chamber room, they would want to come here and do other things, and that would mean more money and, uh, a million dollars. I hate to say this, but in this town, that, that, it would not go very far. So, uh, I mean, we might get three road splits, but yeah. So my time's up.
How much money we got?
A million dollars.
Can we spend?
Yeah, you got, you just received a million dollars.
Oh, million dollars, again. I'm all about the kids. So I'd like to see the weekend, I mean, we got several, uh, baseball fields over there. We need a nice, good T-ball field. And we got a field on the hill that's not being used, and it's just going to waste. All we got to do is just fix some lights, it ain't going to cost us a million dollars for some lights. But, uh, that's what I'm thinking about, just, let's get some more stuff in here for the kids, you know? Get, get them something to do, you know, like at the courts or whatever, you know, we can kind of fix that up a little bit, you know, basketball courts. And, uh, so that's all I want.
Okay, so I have another one that was sent in, is, before I read it, does anybody have a question to ask? All right, step right up. If you wouldn't mind stating your name.
My name is Pace Davis. Recently, I watched a meeting where a couple of items were planning a building campaign for the council regarding the Family Dollar and the whole five families building, uh, as well as similar events that have recently occurred. I think that question is related to your strategy as respective council members to deal with your conflicts of interest, your investments in the town, um, your behavior and how you compose yourself when it relates to your relations, your friends, and the people who stand to benefit from decisions at the council level. Uh, so I'd just like to hear about your strategies, if you were elected, uh, to behave appropriately in your office, uh, regarding, uh, personal matters, but probably more importantly, affairs you're associated with.
Wow, that's a tough one, I said I'd go first.
Okay. Uh, number one, transparency is everything, and that's what you're asking for. You want us to be transparent in how we do things. As for my conflicts, I'm retired. Thankfully, I work for a company, I don't have to do any outside work. My wife and I are very, very happy how we are. I know that everybody can't do that. A lot of people are going to continue on with their careers. So if there is a conflict, say, you were working for a company and, and somehow something happens, they would have to recuse themselves from that. And they do that now. We already see that moving forward, there are lots of them that are doing that. As for how we interact with one another, you have to watch what you say, as my wife has told me. Anything you say in this town, you have no idea who they're related to, or how it's going to get back to you. So you watch what you say. You do keep your own private counsel, and you don't speak about things that don't, that do not speak to the public.
When I ask your question, a person like me, or a spoken out man, come to me face to face, and if you got a problem, we'll fix that problem. I'm not, I'm not one of those type of persons that's just going to go and, like, throw you off or anything, you know, me and you both, you, that's the type of person I am. You gotta, you gotta, I gotta come to you, or you show me what your problem is, and I can fix that. I could try to fix it, but we're going to fix it, okay?
We have an obligation as elected officials to behave, uh, according to a professional standard, and there's a matter of decorum that we have to follow, uh, when we're representing the public. The, there's a concept of team that, that's out there in terms of the way the council should interact with each other, and they do their discussions, uh, prior to and behind closed doors, except when it might indicate they're violating, they have a quorum, they don't have any of the open meetings at. But when it comes time to, to getting out in front of each other, the, the team that we have, the team is the citizens. The, the team is not owing an obligation to each other or the council, and we treat each other professionally. And if you have a conflict of interest, then you need to recuse yourself or abstain from the vote.
It's real simple. I mean, as I said earlier, you know, there's three things that guide me. One is know who you work for. You work for the citizens of Smithville. Two, you know, know the job, know the rules, regulations, they're pretty, pretty clearly defined, uh, and then show up and do the job. So obviously, to specifically answer your question, I would always defend myself with the utmost integrity. Uh, I don't ever foresee having a conflict of interest, but if one should arise, I'd be the first person to stand up and let everybody know that conflict exists. And I think conflict in my mind, different people have different opinions, to me, conflict is mostly about perception. If there's a perception that you have a relationship, or you have a scenario in which you might gain from it, I think your responsibility is to disclose that, and if necessary, to recuse yourself, be considerate.
So for a while, I was vice president of a publicly traded company, and so I'm very familiar with, um, how non-public information has to be handled with the utmost discretion. And it's very similar with the information that obviously council people receive, that cannot be shared with anyone for anyone's advantage, and worse, the worst advantage would be council members in their own pocket. Um, I think it is important to recuse, recuse yourself on anything remotely involving, uh, something that could have personal name or even personal harm, but where there is the perception of it. Um, you know, it was pretty, somebody asked me a question about, do, do city council members sign any ethics agreement or make an ethical oath when they join, and I didn't have the answer to it. So I found out, when you join city council, you agree to two things. You agree that you've never taken a bribe or given a bribe, and you agree to do the job to the best of your ability. Uh, I was really surprised there wasn't anything about, you know, maintaining a very high ethical standard. And it's a kind of great area, how do you define that? But I wouldn't mind that being added.
Do you have a follow-up question to that, or is that the?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, does anybody else have a question here? Uh, if not, I'll read one. Okay, so this came from, uh, Gay Powers, and they said, "Have you been attending the city council meetings regularly? If so, how many?" So this will be easy to, to answer.
Uh, to be honest with you, I only attended one.
We, we have to start, I mean, it's, it's part of the process, and, and, um, I died in this about three years ago. Uh, so I've rarely missed any council meetings or planning and zoning or budget workshops, so anything I can attend, because I needed to learn how the process worked. So I've been a pretty steady attendee, attendee. I've been going to a lot of meetings.
I've not missed any council meetings as a council member. I've also not missed any, you know, sanction workshops or any events that were official events at the council. Prior to, two years ago, when I was first elected, uh, I attended a combination of in-person meetings and Zoom, and the factory pandemic period, so Zoom became a thing. So a pretty, pretty strong, uh, commitment to attend and to be aware of what I'm seeing.
I started attending the city council meetings about, uh, anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months ago. Tried to, to come to all of them, of course, I can't come to all of them. I've been going to the planning and zoning for about the last, I'd say, six to nine months. Uh, I was at every one of Janice's, uh, housing huddles, and that was how it began itself, uh, which is, we have all tried to do the best we can, and as Tom always said, you've got to start somewhere, and you need to show up.
I didn't count, but I've been to most of them the last couple of years, along with, uh, like Judy said, the housing huddles, budget workshops, you can go on the development workshops. Uh, and I also was very fortunate to be invited by Janice Bruno, thank you, Janice, to our Texas Municipal League Conference that was held in San Antonio in the fall. It was all about best practices in local governance, and I learned a lot that I, I hope to be able to bring, um, forward to you guys in council.
Anybody have a question? Mic is open. I have another one that was texted in from, uh, from Gay Powers. This is, "What is your administrative or management background that qualifies you for this job?"
Did I break it? Um, well, I, I, my professional career is about thirty-seven or thirty-eight years. It's about half spent in commercial banking, the other half in, uh, real estate and/or natural resources, which is mostly timberlands in East Texas. Uh, about half of that in private companies, and about half of that in public companies. So to the remarks that, uh, Monica mentioned, I too, you know, very familiar with a variety of, of protocols that are associated with being involved in a public company, and also being a section sixteen or a designated SEC officer of their public company, and some of the things you have to do to comply with those rules or regulations.
As a company owner for over thirty years, I had to, uh, do all of the administrative duties that had to do with that. I had, I had up to, at one time, thirty employees. For the most part, I kept it small, because I did not want to have to deal with all the extra things that went with that. But later on in my year, I went to, I, in my career, I went to work for American Airlines, and that caused a whole different set of, of issues to go through, because they sent you to every meeting they could, and to every class about how to conduct yourself, and, and what to do in public places when talking to the, the people and the public, because their image is everything, and that's one thing we need to do with what the city is promoting.
So, um, well, without trying to look at it as a hierarchy, I've managed downwards, sideways, and upwards. So I had a home building company, my own crews, and building houses from scratch. Uh, I take on about one rehab project a year, just because I'm a house junkie, and it's really fun. Um, I have managed, I work with a public company, I manage our, this is the Sideways, I manage our investment banking and attorney relationships, um, and then, it's kind of crazy, at the beginning of my career, I was twenty-four years old, and dragging CEOs of very large companies all across the US on road shows, helping them present their company to, uh, to sales forces, and having to sort of manage those presentations. So, um, I've had a lot of different management experience, kind of all, you know, full three sixty.
Does everybody? I, I knew we missed somebody.
I graduated college at Texas A&amp;M. I went to work for the Attorney General's Office here in Austin, where I got my lovely bribe, and, uh, moved up the ranks to where I was managing, managing the budget department there. Uh, then I went into a corporate career, which sent me all over the country with my wife and family, but I ended up, um, managing a six-state Midwestern group of, of, uh, district leaders and business owners that are actually beverage wholesalers. And then after that, I decided, let's go to see what the other side looks like, so I left corporate and started my own insurance agency, uh, twenty years ago, from scratch, with Zillow Policies. Uh, built that up to the point, like we were talking earlier, my staff's good enough to let me commit the time that I needed to do this new job.
Awesome.
Well, I'm not a big time businessman, you know? I'm like, all of us, but all I do is hang around Smithville. That's, I know, oh Harley Lee, you know, that's what I like, oh Harley Lee, Smithville, you know? But, uh, I did several, uh, classes at E&amp;F, uh, the Ford Department, you know, and, but other than that, if you're looking for me, that's where I'm at, Smithville.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Anybody? Okay, this one, uh, also from St. Persia, Gay Powers, says, "When reviewing the ordinances that are outdated and need revision, how would you decide to revise? And what is the process of this review and revision? Would you look at other cities that are similar to ours, that are in line with our visions? If so, how?" Anybody need me to repeat that question?
That's a, that's a, that's a big question. Um, I mean, obviously, the comprehensive plan is going to deal largely with, you know, broad land use issues, um, and I think the zoning ordinance are an integral part of looking at that comprehensive plan. Land use defines so much of what a city looks like and how it acts. There were references to the impact that zoning and comprehensive plan can have on affordability, which I would certainly agree with. Size does matter in housing, and I think that was the point Monica was trying to make. Uh, so the process would include certainly looking at other cities that are in our same position today, but maybe more importantly, try and identify those cities in Texas that may have been where we are today five and ten years ago. And look at what they did, interview them, define that if they had to do it over again ten years later, what would they do differently? You know, there's no reason we should reinvent the wheel, so I would very heavily advocate for interviewing other cities, uh, and trying to learn from what other people have done.
We do have to go out and ask other communities how they made their planning and zoning work, and what, what did work for them and what didn't work. But there, there are a lot of things... There are a lot of things that go with that, that manages the land, as Tom said, also how the buildings are put up, what, you know, our technology has changed over the years. Trust me, from when I was apprentice to now, they don't, they do not do the same things the same. Things have changed in the building industry. That will help in the planning and zoning. We also have to ask our people that live here, do you, you know, do you want curves everywhere? Do, how do you want the streets to look? How do you want your neighborhood to look? This will affect the planning and zoning.
I don't believe in recreating the wheels, so yes, taking out other cities and looking at best practices, what has worked for them, what's been a disaster. Olympic Wango's comprehensive plan is incredible and I'd also look at things that have gone wrong, like Bastero's comprehensive plan and new zoning ordinances are very detailed but have been kind of a disaster for them in certain ways. So we got to learn what has been done right and done wrong and figure out what's best to apply to our specific situations.
Read it again. Is this all about planning and zoning?
I'm going to read it again. "When reviewing the ordinances that are outdated and need revision, how would you decide priorities and what is the process of this review and revision? Would you look at other cities so that ours are in line with our visions or what would you do? How?"
So I won't recreate the wheel and decide what I just said, but the ride, we have to go to other cities and see what's been working for them. When I first got involved in watching what's going on with our subdivision ordinances, all of our ordinances, the planning and zoning advance requests, at least, we were, our family was involved in giving an easement so the detention point could be built on Seventh Street. So that was my first awareness of understanding how things were written and as I said earlier recently, there's some ambiguity in the language with technical lawyers that have been involved. But there's a lot of stuff that we need to shore up, to say the least. And they're all, we need to take a look at them and make them look like what we want so that Smithville looks like what we want.
Okay, and then last. Last question that was sent to me. So if you have a question and you want me to read it, just text it. My phone number is up here and I will ask you, just make sure your name is attached and also the microphone is open. Last one that was sent to me from Gaye Powers, says, "How do you give people an opportunity to present their views from both sides of an issue? How do you give people an opportunity to present their views from both sides of an issue?"
So the planning and zoning and historic preservation committee is right now. Everyone in this town has an opportunity to show up at those meetings and present their views, for a variance, against a variance, for something, against something, not even a variance. So we have the opportunity to do it now, we just need to encourage people to exercise their voice. And I think that the more people show up and the more they see that council or the committees' votes are influenced by the things that they say, the more people who will continue to show up believing that these individuals can make a difference.
I mean, I can echo a lot of what Monica said. I would stress that your engagement shouldn't be viewed as limited to showing up at meetings. You know who we are. Most people in this room know how to get in touch with me. You can obviously always call the city hall and you can get the phone number of any council member. So your time to engage and get involved isn't limited to a meeting day to time. If you know something's coming up and feel strongly about something, a number of people in this room have reached out to me directly with issues pertaining to, there are retaining walls in front of their house, drains in front of their house, a variety of things. And I always take those calls, I always try to be as responsive as I can. Most times I find that I'm a liaison with the technical or the subject matter experts at the city, whether it be Robert or Jack or Cynthia or Tracy or whoever it is. So your council members are not only a sphere of influence for you, but they're also a source of education and information and they're ultimately a liaison. They can provide some credibility. It's sad to say, and this is no knock on Robert or Jack, but if a council member calls and says, "Hey, we got a problem down here, X and X," I've always seemed to be able to get somebody to come out and at least look at it. If you might not be able to fix it, they'll look at it.
What I've learned is that the process is there. We need a willingness from the citizens to come forward and make their voices heard. I've been leaning towards some sort of education and outreach, but, you know, even as we're out campaigning right now and talking to people, I ask them, "Have you been to a council meeting? Have you been to planning and zoning? Have you ever reached out and contacted someone and expressed what your desires are?" It's like people come to meetings right now and they want to speak after they've heard some issue brought up, but that's not the process. The process is you got to sign up to speak before the meeting. That's an education thing in a lot of ways and I think we can help address that, but the process exists for both sides to be heard. We just got to have a willingness in the community to hear from you.
You mind if I add a little thing to Mitch? You do technically have the responsibility to sign up in order to speak officially at a meeting. You do not have to sign up to call your council member and tell them to talk to you.
It all comes down to community and community involvement. We all need to speak up and tell councilmen what we want, how we see it, and what bothers you about anything that's happening in town. You, you know, if you wait till the last minute, well, things, sometimes they're already done. So if you're behind the clock, you can't get what you want accomplished. Come to the meetings, it's very important. I have learned that over the last year and a half of talking to people. Come out and speak to the city councilman as much as you can. They are there for you. I've approached him many times about things. He has always been there. Janice also. So just get out, talk to the people, be involved in the community.
All right, any more questions? Anybody? Microphone is open. Okay, I'm going to ask one of these that's coming from me, because I actually want to know. Smithville has a lot going for it. This is a great, a great city. What do you think is Smithville's greatest asset and how can we utilize what Smithville currently has to offer?
Finally, the easement. Small-town charm and beauty. Most of us have lived in a lot, understanding. We have a lot of people and screen people in this room that have lived here because of it. We can focus on that to manage the growth that's coming. But to me, it is what brings us together, I think, as a community is, and when I say small-town beauty in term, it, small-town means community too. And we can become more unified, but most of us know that we can come and each other. We just, we need to bottle it and I don't agree to myself, but let's just capture it.
I would echo what Mitch says. I mean, I think small-town charm is probably one of the most, you know, the greatest assets we have. It means different things to different people. I would also say for me, our diversity, and I don't just mean the diversity categories that we all have heard in presentations that were, you know, I'm talking about the diversity of experiences and backgrounds. When you go around this town, you see everything from a variety, a broad variety of artistic pursuits on display here and people that have fascinating backgrounds. I spoke earlier about not being paid in dollars, but being paid in dollar ways. One of the things that I've enjoyed most has been getting to know people. And I can't tell you how many times I've sat on somebody's porch or sat across from someone and for the first time have learned about their background, told them about mine, and walked away going, "Oh my gosh, I would never have known that that person had accomplished and done the things that they've done in their life." So that kind of feeds in also to the small-town charm of the smaller area. We see each other, we have opportunities to interact and engage with each other when you're in a small town. I would encourage you to do it as well as engage with the community.
The people that live in this town are its biggest asset. They are everything that you want, they're friendly, helpful. Every time I turn around and find, you know, if I'm doing something in the yard, I have people stop me, "Do you need some help? Do you want something? Hey, do you know where I can get this?" Everyone talks to each other. You don't get that in a big city, you really do not. People aren't very worried. I lock my doors at night, but it's not because I think I have to. This town is really, really a small town and it feels like that and it just exudes a charm that we want to keep. I think it's, that's one of the most wonderful things about it.
Yes, small-town charm, but also with some big-city assets. We are so lucky. We have a river, we have broadband internet, high-speed internet for remote workers. We have some pretty, we have a lot of big brains and experiences across this town. So we have some pretty amazing assets for a town this size, but we don't have to deal with all the bologna that goes with a big town. We don't have to deal with all the traffic and a lot of infighting and people waving when they see you down the street, whether they ever thank you or not. And I just, I just had goosebumps. I mean, that, that's amazing property and you don't get that anywhere else though place like this.
All right, yeah, that's why I come in at right there now. Like I say, I'm a long-time Smithvillian and I don't care where I'm at, I'm going to speak to you. I don't care if you don't speak to me. My wife always says, "Do you know them?" I say, "I don't know them." She's like, "Well, why did you speak?" Well, that's kind of personal, you know? And if you ever see me pulling a lawnmower down the road on South Side or North Side, if you ever stop me and say, "Can you come rip my leaves?" It just depends on how many leaves you got. I'd rip my leaf though. But other than that, now this is, I love Smithville and I always will love Smithville and I love the people in Smithville. We all get along with each other because I do not have no this side or that side. Tyrone is Tyrone and Tyrone gonna be Tyrone until I leave this city, but I ain't gonna leave Smithville.
Any more questions? I have a question. What is Election Day?
May 6th.
May 6th. Oh, sorry, I just, election day is May 6th. And so everybody, make sure you get out and vote. This is the city, you know, this is the business of how a city runs, the reason we love it is because people like you step up and do the job. So thank you so much. I think it means so much that they would come out and give their time here. And it's our job now, it's incumbent on us to go and vote on May 6th. Also, thanks to Miles, my son, for being willing to be the next man. So I want to give you each just a minute to kind of say goodbye, closing things. So let's give two minutes, okay? You got it, Pat? Two minutes on the clock.
I want more time to think back. I just, I've said, I mean, there's so much in my speech I didn't get to say, but really it doesn't matter that much. I, even though I'm not from here, I think all my time away from here before I got here gives me a unique perspective, a set of experiences, an invitation that would allow me to get a lot done and I'm a person of action I like doing. I don't just want to go to the meetings once a month, I actually want to get out and get some stuff done. So I would be very grateful for your vote and giving me the opportunity to do that.
I think everyone up here wants to serve the community. I think that's why we all have started down this journey, this path that we're on. No matter what happens, I'm going to continue to walk the neighborhoods and talk to the people because that's where you learn what your community wants and how they feel and what's happening around you. I think I could do a wonderful job if they let me, but I also think that Mike could do it. I think anyone up here will do a great job for this city. That doesn't mean I want you to vote for them, I want you to vote for me, I will do this. But I really do believe that Smithville is going to really have a good group of folks to lead them into the future. I hope you believe this as much as I do.
I'd just say thank you for letting me serve you the last two years. Thank you in advance for your support and hopefully your engagement in the next two years. It strikes me that accomplishing anything boils down to execution. You got to have strategies, you got to have ideas, but at the end of the day, you got to go do it, you got to execute it. And so one of the reasons governance is so important to me is governance is the foundation that allows you to be more effective at execution, whether it's how you run meetings, whether it's how you engage with the community, whether it's how you delegate authority to boards and commissions, how you monitor their progress, their strategies, your processes and procedures, all of that feeds up to governance. And so I'm hopeful that if you get engaged, that you get engaged in a way that you hold your readers accountable and that you tell us what you want and that you show up and I think we will pledge to be responsible.
I'd like to just say thank you all for coming out and listening to me. And like I say, May, what else? May 6th. Hopefully everybody did out and go vote. And if not, y'all see that brown truck with the lawnmower pull up beside your house knocking on your door, that'll be me telling y'all to go vote. Or y'all see Lyles be going back in my trailer saying, "Election day, come out and vote." So again, thank y'all and I enjoyed this evening.
Tyrone and I have been going around with Alan Hocky and the Gentlemen for putting up signs. Jean and I were in the truck and we were, so Jean said, "Let's call him." So we called Tyrone. This is a great forum. Thank you very much. Lori and Johnny put this on. I know this is outside of the norm for the way Smithville's been this. It's been very challenging. Thank you very much. You made us have to think on our feet up here. And I hope if Suzie's listening up there, let's get the chamber to open up. That one, there's still a little bit more to it because I think this was great. I was talking to Tyrone and I said, "Man, you're in front of me here." Because this gets easier, it really does. But until we have you guys interact with us like that, I'm just excited. Thank you, the people who showed up to do this. Hopefully you'll go home and tell somebody else that this is a good thing and go over to the next one, be at the chamber or whatever. Please tell them your thoughts and have them call us, if you guys call us. We've got the interest and if you get this column up, we'll come up and say, "Thanks, John."
Thank you guys. This is nerve-wracking, isn't it, stand up there and just have to answer anything thrown at you? So thank you all for the questions that you sent me and the ones you asked. And also I want to thank Fat Cat for putting this on and Lori.
I'm sorry for the mishap today, I apologize. But anyway, I wanted to thank you and I wanted to tell to all of you that I will do this one more time if you want to do it later before the elections. I wanted to do that because I really think it's important that really more people than this show up. And I think after this, if you guys go and you talk to people and you tell people that you were here and it was an open forum for all candidates. By the way, I've never met a sir. Jay want you to be knocking. Anyway, I'm thinking that more people will show up if we do it again and I am totally willing to do that. I also wanted to tell you guys a couple of things that we are getting ready to do at the Fat Cat that I'm really excited about, so you can please spread the word. We're doing a olfactory wine class.